Well, that usually is the sign that I'm supposed to start. So, welcome everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. With that, I have a vice for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of America and to our republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you. How's Megan handling roll call? Is she able to hear or?
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, you are.
I am here. Uh, trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Present. Everyone is present. All right. This is, uh, we've just gotten off of having Zoom call our meetings and maybe one or two. What do we have? And now we have guests, which is really great to have a roomful of people. So, nice to be getting back to normal and we'll proceed from here. So, Bill, could you start us off with a reading of the conservation ethic?
The conservation ethic. Role number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And then, role number four, to interpret and to promote the overall significance of natural and cultural resources and to promote public understanding and support of the district's land management practices.
Okay, thank you. And Dave, could you do the stewardship?
I would be delighted. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and whale life in McHenry County. My head hurts. For, uh, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and whale life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully develop cities and towns and a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number one, we will protect land which filters and removes pollutants from water by enhancing groundwater recharge.
So, those of you that don't know, this is Dave's last meeting as a trustee. He's been here for one five-year term and now another five-year term. So, he has 10 years in here, which is fairly unusual. And, uh, we had a last, uh, last Tuesday, and Dave was unable to attend because he was sitting in Southern Illinois. But he, he attended via Zoom and he looked like he was enjoying retirement already. Anyway, um, that's great. And, uh, so we'll proceed from there. Adopt the agenda. We need a motion to adopt the agenda. Bill will make the motion. Linda will make the second. We need to have a roll call for everything, so, uh, Megan.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell? Trustee Cook? Trustee Fritz? Trustee Brandt? Trustee Thomas? And Trustee Hunning?
So where is dear Megan? She's, I hear her, but I don't see her.
All right. As everyone, I think, knows, we're here celebrating our 50th anniversary. I think we're off to a 50 years. Ed always talks about how old dirt is around here. How old is the dirt around here, Ed?
It depends on what side of the ring you're at.
All right, take my farming shablon. You always tell me that's a really old spot.
You don't have a really old dirt.
Yeah, how, how old is that?
About 18,000 years and the really old dirt's 100,000.
Okay, so 50 years, we're off to a good start, is what it amounts to. We're off to a good start here. And with that, well, um, I, I first, on our agenda is Illinois Senate Certificate of Recognition, presented by the Honorable State Senator Craig Wilcox. If he'd like to come forward and, or however, wherever you'd like to do that from.
Do you have a speaker?
Where everyone here is right there. Thank you.
So it's my pleasure, and I've told Elizabeth and many, the first two places I took my parents, who raised me in Vermont, were Glacier Park and the Bolo Bonn. I grew up in the outdoors. Uh, my dad and I were trout fishermen and got out in the little creeks all the time in Vermont. And so, it was very special when I moved to McHenry to have these resources available in our commitment. So, this certificate is from the 102nd General Assembly, acknowledges McHenry County Conservation District. It'll probably read very similar. In recognition of its 50th anniversary, celebrated in a half-century of service, and extends its congratulations and best wishes to the McHenry County Conservation District Board, employees, volunteers, patrons, and the entire McHenry County community on receiving this honor. And it's signed by the Senate President and Secretary of the Senate and myself. We'll present it.
Would our president, board president, would you go get one picture?
Sure.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, maybe just try to block that table with your body.
We can do that.
They also sort of who blocked the table?
Thank you. Thank you.
On the way to that younger.
I guess when I said before the speaker, we, we are still via Zoom and that is picking up the, the sound. So, maybe, I meant that's where the speaker was. Anybody can come if I'm around, whoever, whoever they want to make a speech from. With that, we'll be picking up the sound, hopefully. And also, uh, we have Becky Gillum here from the district director of Senator Donald DeWitt.
Hi.
And, uh, so she's, she was also.
Woo-hoo.
I know this from the sun, so thank you.
Nice to see you.
I'm so excited to be invited to this, so it's so good to see you guys.
Thank you very much. With that, we move on to Illinois House Resolution Number 238, presented by the Honorable State Representative Stephen Reich, 63rd District, and co-sponsored by State Representative Suzanne Ness, District and Top District 66, Tom Weber, 64th District, and Martin McLaughlin of the 52nd District, and Dan?
UGastie.
Ugastie. I couldn't miss that one all day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, if you, Congressman Reich?
Representative. Don't, don't put me in Congress, please. As Craig's, um, resolution stated, uh, I'm here to congratulate MCCD on 50 years of, uh, doing good for McHenry County. Anybody who's talked to me knows that, um, for the past going on 30 years.
Check, check, check.
I've been going up.
Hello?
I've been going up to the Bowery Waters of Northern Minnesota, uh, and paddling in and spending a week in the wilderness. And it's really nice to know that as I get older and can't make that trip anymore, uh, I've got something here in McHenry County that will, uh, remind me of that and serve as a new way of appreciating where it is that we live here in McHenry County. I'm never, uh, I'm never, um, not amazed with the fact that this county is just beautiful. And a lot of it has to do with the work that you folks have done to maintain the open spaces that we have. And it's in that regard that, uh, I ask that this resolution be drafted by, uh, the Illinois House to congratulate the board, the organization, the volunteers, people, all the hard work that you have done, um, in making McHenry County the beautiful, or retaining the beauty of McHenry County as, as it is. So, uh, rather than going through the resolution, which states pretty much exactly what the senator took my thunder and, and stated, uh, I'd like to present this, uh, resolution on behalf of the Illinois House of Representatives to the board and people of McHenry County Conservation District for 50 years and would you? 50 more. Yeah? So, thank you. See, that's the thing of Zoom. Now, you guys, you could have had these meetings all along and we've got to all watch, right?
That's right. That's great. So, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Let's hold this open. No, we don't know you got.
You have one more yet?
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we did receive a letter from Daniel Ugastie, um, stating here, Ms. Kessler, "Congratulations to McHenry County Conservation District on their celebration of the district's 50th anniversary. The citizens of McHenry County have been well-served by your efforts to reserve, restore, and manage natural areas and open spaces. I am proud to be a co-sponsor of HR 238 to recognize the importance of milestone. Please accept my very best wishes for a wonderful, wonderful celebration." We received that. Are there any other representatives that would like to speak? And we have another thing. You're coming up next if you, that's, anyone else? Okay, so, with that being said, next is, uh, Representative Suzanne Ness to, uh, there's a resolution, House Number 155, recognizing our executive director for her lifetime achievement of the Robert Arts Lifetime Achievement Award.
Thank you. So, um, first of all, hearing everything, and I didn't even realize coordinating this with the 50th anniversary, but how special is that? When I was on the McHenry County Board and I first learned about just the tremendous work that you've done, your career, your background, your experience, and how lucky we were here in the county to have that expertise, I was really impressed by that. And so, when I became a representative, I wanted to do something to acknowledge that. So, when I read about your lifetime achievement award, I decided to have a resolution drawn up, hoping to present this to you on the House floor, but, um, with COVID, nobody else came to the House floor except us. So, I'd really like to present this to you in honor of all the work that you've done and what you brought to our county. And I would say, after the pandemic, the year of the pandemic, I think we all appreciate it even more. So, thank you for everything that you've done, your tremendous efforts, and all your work. Thank you so much.
One more.
One more.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Anyone else have any, like, oh, we have, uh, we have some trustees, emeritus here, or I'm not gonna, I know, I see a couple back there. There's, uh, three, I see. Anymore? Anybody else want to say anything?
There's two outside.
There's two outside. Okay, so that's great. All right, and, uh, we, I see Ann back there. So, I haven't seen Ann since she retired, so. Very nice. All right, uh, with that, we're gonna welcome new employees. Ed Collins and Brad Woodson are not new employees, but I think they're going to introduce somebody that is.
Brad, anything else? He did the lion's share of the interviewing and?
Oh, actually, I'll, I'll start with that. We actually had an interview panel of five people, um, had a lot of good candidates. And Brennan Ness is right there, so, um, Brennan Ness was selected for the agricultural ecologist position. Uh, she comes from Delaware just recently, so she had a job there as the Director of Conservation in Delaware Wildlands. And actually worked in hunting program, an agricultural program, and a natural areas management program. So, she has a tremendous amount of experience and actually dovetails right in what we do here, which is just fantastic. She has a degree from Southern Illinois and Iowa State University, so she has a master's degree from there. And she's been here a little three or four weeks and just done a fabulous job so far. So, she's gotten involved in some tile work that we have going on, some well issues and some grazing issues. And actually, there's a couple of things in the, um, in the board packet tonight, uh, from our trunk grassland venture. And we have, of course, the bison lease coming up, so she's been working on that. So, congratulations to Brennan. We're happy to have her.
So, Brendan?
Yeah.
At the SIU, what was your degree there?
My degree was in zoology at Southern Illinois University.
Cool. Right, Ann?
I thought you'd like that, Dave.
Thanks, Brad. I don't know if I have a, a chance to say anything.
Go ahead.
Please.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank you for the kind words in the introduction. As you mentioned, I spent the last five years managing natural lands and ag lands in Delaware with a focus on ecological restoration, natural resource management, and sustainable farming practices. I grew up in central Illinois. I'm from Pekin. I earned my degrees here in Illinois and in Iowa, as Brad said. And I spent a number of years working various seasonal jobs in wildlife research and natural resource conservation across the US from Wyoming to Maine. I'm passionate about natural resource conservation and really finding a balance between the cultural heritage and economic value of agriculture and the conservation benefits of sustainable farming, grazing, and ecological restoration. So, I'm, I'm really excited to be working for the Conservation District and the LP in our division to bring my skills to the table. And I'm looking forward to working together with you all to enhance the farm program, to promote the conservation goals of the district. So, thank you.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
One, as I back up, well, thank you and welcome, thank you very much. As I back up through my agenda here, I realize that I missed Chairman Bueller. And I'm sorry about that, and it's really not very smart on my part saying how. Nope. Well, I look over and I don't want, I had to.
Mike Bueller, County Board Chairman, glad to be here with you tonight. As an avid user of all the properties in McHenry County for over 20 years, I was very excited that one of my very first meetings was after I was sworn in, was with Ms. Kessler and Mr. Hunning. And, uh, admiration of the job that you guys have done with the properties around the county. Some of the finest maintained trail systems that I've seen in the Midwest. So, you're to be commended for that. And, uh, Mr. Brandt, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. And, uh, I'm just really very happy to be here with you on your 50th anniversary. And we'll continue to use all of your properties for years to come.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. All right. Trustees report. Any trustees have anything they'd like to report tonight? County Board Liaison report.
Okay, so, um, to go along with the 50th anniversary, we did pass a resolution honoring the 50th anniversary at the County Board in April. So, um, I didn't bring it along. I should have.
Thank you.
But yes, we celebrated the Conservation District in April. So, um, to other news, a law was passed and signed by Governor Prisker to delay our redistricting, like I explained last, last month about our redistricting. So, our maps will now need to be introduced into the County Board by November and pass no later than December. So, that means that our primary is also delayed until June. So, we have more time to, um, collect signatures and then vote. And as you know, the county has received almost $60 million from the American Rescue Act over the next two years. The county is currently disseminating the guidelines for the use of these funds. And we have received $105 million in requests or ideas to use for these $16 million. So, there will be multiple meetings to assess the best uses for the funds. I did see the, the Conservation District requests on there, so I'll be rooting for those. The County Board, I just came, and Mr. Bueller came from a second of our two strategic planning meetings. There were a total of eight hours in these meetings and it was a collaborative effort of ideas for the, where we envision the county. And I'll tell you, agritourism and the Conservation District and outside outdoors was brought up a lot. You are definitely appreciated within the County Board and are, um, definitely part of our strategic plan. We were contracted with the Center for Governmental Studies from NIU to guide us through this process. And then, lastly, I want to thank trustee Brandt for all the wonderful work he's done during his time on the Conservation District Board. Although I haven't been a liaison very long, I've heard time and time again all the wonderful things you've done for the district. Thank you for your service and enjoy your time. And which I think you already started to do last month or last week, as we saw on Zoom. Congratulations.
I have to thank you, but I have to tell you, I was sitting under a mimosa that was in full bloom and, uh, the hines birds were just all over it, butterflies, pollinators, so it was a fun watch. I should have been watching the meeting, but, uh, was that.
I thought you were gonna say you were sitting.
You would have seemed quite adept.
Right, that, that's good. Well, thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, the President's Report is next, and I don't have anything to report at this time, uh, which brings us to, and we did keep our agenda fairly light tonight. Next month, we reorganize and we really have to get to work, because, uh, we have a lot to do. But anyway, tonight, we kept it light, uh, and that brings us to public comments. So, if there's anybody from the public that would like to make a comment, uh, certainly, this is the time. And we have one at the end of the meeting, too, so. Is there anybody out there in, via Zoom or somewhere else, do we know, who's monitoring that tonight? Stephanie?
Well, there's, there's nobody on Zoom for comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Those of you that are down in Springfield, do you remember voting for something that says we have to read our whole consent agenda out loud? Well, we do. So, so.
So, sit tight. More Lynn.
Go ahead. So, this is Lynn's job. We don't call on her for anything else because this takes it all.
Um, there's no one wants to remove anything?
Yeah, is there anything that anybody wants removed? Nobody's called me here yet.
No, no.
All right. Go ahead, Lynn. Thank you.
All right, so, um, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the following. 12.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings. 12.1A, May 20, 2021, committee to hold. 12.1B, May 25, 2021, regular meeting. 12.1C, April 15, 2021, Cal Meeting Executive Session. 12.2, acceptance of Treasuries Report. 12.2A, acceptance of Treasuries Report from May 2021, as presented. 12.3, Resolution Number 21-44, a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Nettle Creek Nursery, Inc., of Morris, Illinois, for stream bank stabilization of the Currys Trail South Crystal Creek Bridge for a cost not to exceed $60,478. 12.4, Resolution Number 21-45, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a joint grassland venture lease agreement on the 54-plus-or-minus acres VOC-01 parcel located at Boone Creek Conservation Area to, Leemont?
Leemont.
Leemont Grain Company, Inc., for a period of three growing seasons from July 1, 2021, to October 31, 2023. 12.5, Authorization to Prepare Specifications and Leading a Bid for the Purchase of Unleaded Diesel and Propane Fuels for a contract period of one year beginning September 1, 2021. 12.6, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 21-1004, an ordinance amending Policy 4.10 and Appendix C Criminal Background Check, Policy 9.16, and Appendix H Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment, and Form E Fingerprint Submission Consent Form. 12.7, Resolution Number 21-46, a resolution authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to a liber agreement between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police and McHenry County Conservation District from April 1, 2022, March 31, 2023. 12.8, Resolution Number 21-47, a resolution authorizing the executive director or for designee to execute a side letter of understanding between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police and the McHenry County Conservation District to memorialize the change to the approach to lateral hire. 12.9, Resolution Number 21-48, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a First Amendment to the Month-to-Month Residence Lease License Agreement for Coral Woods Residence for the term extending to March 31, 2022. 12.10, Resolution Number 21-49, a resolution ratifying the execution of a Month-to-Month Residence License Agreement for Glacier Park Residence for the term ending, extending to March 31, 2022. 12.11, Resolution Number 21-50, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the agreement documents with Illinois Fire Service Institute to provide both the S-130 Field Day and S-219 Ignition Operations Trainings. 12.12, Resolution Number 21-50, and a resolution to accept the Phase 1 Archaeological Reconnaissance Survey for the Hollis Conservation Area, Peachon Farmstead, as prepared by Midwest Archaeological Research Services of Crystal Lake, Illinois. 12.13, First Reading, Mitigation Bank Credit Sales Policy Number 7.02.09, Land Preservation and Natural Ecosystem Management Policies Within the Comprehensive Administrative Policy and Procedure Manual. 12.14, Resolution Number 21-52, a resolution authorizing the execution of a Month-to-Month Residential License Agreement for the Thomas Woods Campground Trailer for the term of June 2030, 2021, through November 1, 2021. 12.15, Resolution Number 21-53, a resolution affirming the executive director's execution of a contract with Constellation New Energy Chicago for electric service at 15 district sites at a fixed price of .05641 dollars per kilowatt hour by amending the term to July 1, 2021, to November 30, 2022.
And I will second.
Okay, I have a second by Dave Brandt. Megan, could you call a roll?
Trustee Thomas? Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz? Trustee Dom? Trustee Campbell? Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And Trustee Hunning?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. That moves to do an unfinished board business. The first one is approval of bills payable for the month of May 2, 2021. Treasuries Internal Audit, we usually pull three to four bills, uh, to be audited or to be checked, to make sure they went through all the proper procedures. And Dave Brandt usually is very good pulling those three to four. How far is he? Did you pull any tonight?
I have some, just in case anybody else. All right. So, vendor D 7286, Dries Licker Electronic Motors for $187.24, and, uh, vendor R 203223, Herman Browser for $143.94. I only picked two.
You only picked two? Anybody else have one they'd like though?
I've got, um, P, P buddies North, um, P 7428 for $111.44. And we're gonna have to start signing.
Yes, I know.
Next month.
Next month, everybody else gotta bring them.
I'm kidding. We've been relying on.
We have a hole in our lineup now.
There's a hole in the lineup, so.
Okay. Well, that, that's taken care of then. Bill, could you make a motion for the 13.1B on the conserve bill?
Yes, I would move that we approve the payment to conserve FS as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the period ending May 31, 2021.
I have a second. Pat? The motion's made and seconded. Roll call, Megan.
Um, trustee Brandt? Trustee Fritz? Trustee Campbell? Trustee Cook? Trustee Thomas? Trustee Dom? And trustee Hunning?
I'll abstain from voting, so the motion carries with six yays and one abstention. Move on to the second.
So, I move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the month ending May 31, 2021.
Second?
Yes.
Linda? Motion's been made and seconded. Megan, roll call.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas? Trustee Brandt? Trustee Cook? Trustee Dom? Trustee Fritz? And trustee Hunning?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Moves us on to executive director's report.
Okay, uh, briefly legislative update. So, we got a very appreciative to have our Illinois legislators with us today. And thank you so much for all your effort.
legislators with us today, and thank you so much for all your efforts. I know it's a busy time and with legislation, we didn't get a chance to go down for Parks Day this year, but we normally do, and we really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and to connect with you and the district. And if there's an opportunity to get you out on sites or to take you up close and personal to kind of see the behind the scenes, we'd be more than happy to offer that to you. But we truly appreciate that. I know it's a busy time. We are working with the Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Preserve Districts with our legislative agendas, and so identifying what pieces of legislation do we need some support on. I know there were several things this year that allowed us to do some efforts as far as construction design. Should ever we have dollars to do that, that would ease things up and make things more cost-effective, but we truly appreciate that when efforts go forward with forest preserves or park districts, that conservation districts are considered within that legislation because a lot of times, since there's only five of us, we get left out unintentionally. So we do appreciate all of that. 50th anniversary, August 14th, we are doing a special celebration, I mentioned this before, at Felpro, people are, a lot of activities, sort of take you back over 50 years with nostalgia from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. And then we will have, I would like our legislators, our board members, and at 12:00 noon, we'll be doing some, just some public speaking, et cetera, for that, and we'll hope that everybody can join us for that fun day. And then another discussion, just to lead, when I talked to President Henning, I did put in our memo, a proposed change to the September meeting dates to move the committee of the hold to the Tuesday and then do that following Thursday, same week, the regular meeting. The reason being is the National Recreation and Parks Association is holding their conference the following week, it is hybrid, and that is something that I myself have attended and opened up that opportunity and other board members, if there was an interest in attending too. So if that date works, if it doesn't, we can find some other dates.
What's your dates?
Dates. September 14th, which is the Tuesday.
Is a cow.
Is a cow. And then do that following Thursday, which would be, which we already have is the cow, to move that to be a regular meeting.
Oh, so the cow is the regular meeting and then just bumped up two days.
Two days for the cow.
Yeah, well, I disagree.
Are you busy? I, that's, I don't know.
I'm putting it in now, so it's all good with me.
Yeah, me too.
Does that work? Does that work with everyone? I appreciate that, that's wonderful. Okay, so we'll plan for that, and then again, that is really all I have for Director's Report.
Thank you. So trustee reports, let's see, Fox River Ecosystem, Lynn?
Yeah, not too much going on. Last month, or this month, was the Crystal Creek Warshed tour, very interesting. Next month is, I hope, if you're interested, give me a.
Kish River Ecosystem.
I don't believe there was anything Kish.
Okay. Chicago Wilderness, Bill's with.
The only thing I want to remind everyone is we have a webinar with our consultant, with ICL, and they are at the Conservation Leadership Institute, and they are working on a network mindset for two hours this Friday. It's really important, I think what makes Chicago Wilderness unique, it's a four-state region alliance that's with federal, county, state, nonprofits, local units of government, and as an alliance, as a network, it doesn't operate like normal associations. So everybody has to kind of chip in and do your part, and that's the engine that works. So there's not a staff, it is all the partner membership. So we're going to be talking a little bit about that, but we do have a green vision that we are refining and then also beginning to do some other exciting work for the year ahead. So I would encourage anybody that's interested, that should be a good webinar for this Friday.
John, may I just say one thing with Kelly and Chairman Bueller? Remember that the defenders and the McDot worked together to fund and to put signs out for the Kish? So I've seen them all over, so thank you, I want to call the McDot and thank them, but I'm also seeing it in the Fox. So I just think that's spectacular, so thank you very much for that. That's awesome.
Yeah, they all went up pretty quickly.
They went up really quick.
I mean, that's a lot. Henry Honey Farm Bureau, Pat?
We finally had enough members to have a quorum, to have a meeting. We could go tomorrow. We talked about the solar farm that's going in, Marengo, South Marengo, and that's going to go one way or the other. The other thing was, the county highway department was there, and they started last year this living snow fence, you leave like six rows of standing corn along the roads, and then they're trying to get more, more people to do that, farmers to do that. And then the third thing was, we had some guy talking about broadband, wanted us to join some broadband thing. We heard the same thing, Paul.
Yeah, many times.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
About the snow fences. So are the, the farmers are compensated, is that correct?
Right, it's a thousand dollars an acre.
A thousand dollars an acre, okay. Because I, I would love to work with them on encouraging that, so sometimes.
They had, last year, they kind of started too late, you know, to get people signed up, and.
Well, I think the legislation didn't raise that rate before, it was not very much to sacrifice corn in the field, but they raised the rate to make it a little more enticing.
It isn't just the corn that you sacrifice, it's the fact that you can't, that you have to get your combine back out the next spring.
For one row.
Yeah, and if it's right across from your shop or where you store your combine, that's great, but if you're farming eight miles from there, now it's an eight-mile drive to your combine and eight miles back.
Then there was talk that maybe they could get some way to just do that. You know, most people, farmers, you put your combine, wash it up and put it away for the year, and then get it out for an acre or something like that.
Yeah, that's, I think, the biggest drawback is that you've got to drive around and take care of it.
So it's promising.
Okay. All right, so Lynn, I think I have the wrong name behind this one on my, on my regular meeting sheet, but anyway, I think, are you IA CP? That's not you, who is?
That's me and Liz.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Liz, you went to a Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Preserve District meeting, didn't you?
We did have a spring Zoom meeting, it'll be in August, and I don't know, I think we're, so that'll be great, I'll send information out on that one. And then the National Recreation Park Association, as I mentioned, anyone that's interested, let me know over early bird, but that's September 21st through September 23rd. And there's a virtual option, and then there's also the in-person. I know Dave has attended, Lynn has attended before.
Couple of them, very interesting.
Again, some good sessions, good opportunities to network with other elected officials in the space.
Okay, Conservation Foundation, Linda, I see you have at least one member of the foundation here, and maybe there's more.
Of course. No, there's more, there's, yeah.
Oh, there we are, right there. Okay, that's, we've met via Zoom.
Um, hi, welcome. I could not attend their special call meeting, but I do have an update on Pedal, Pedal, Saddle. It was their biggest turnout ever, and they raised over $10,000.
Oh, very nice.
Seriously. Great job.
And it was hot and low water.
But still, they lost the money.
Very good.
So congratulations on that.
Perfect. Wow.
All right, McCog, Lynn, you do have that one, I believe.
Oh, yeah, the golf outing is coming up, I think it's this week, isn't it? So anyway.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. So I think.
It's two days.
Yeah, so I think if, I mean, maybe too late for the golfing, but if anyone wanted to join in on the lunch, we would need to know, so we could get in touch with Shaylan, but people are welcome to come for lunch if they want to, and that's it for the show.
And then they started in-person meetings now also.
This, well. Last one on Zoom, I think they're going to try to go forward after the golf outing, and I know there's another event that's a social at the Johnson Bird Yacht, was mistaken?
Yeah, the Yacht Club is next month, and then I don't think that they, so that's, this is June, I think, was it July or August for the Yacht Club?
I was just also going to mention, under McCog, I know McCog and McHenry County were very involved in this, as you recall, they sat on the shared services, which again, under NACO, under the National Association of County Officials, that received a program award for the work, and actually, they were talking today, there was a representative from SNAP that didn't interview, and I know they were talking with county staff, too, on the MacArthur Foundation and just the breadth of the impact that this had. I mean, this is to, kudos to the county and leading efforts of McCog with Shaylan, the deliverables and all that for, I think, will come out for other counties then, you know, to replicate and to add value. So that came out of McCog and of working together, so.
And that's the, that's also that the, I don't, she sends out a list of a lot of the things that you can jump in on for contracts and solids, and it's amazing the, quite, the list of things that are available.
So anybody notice all of that, that during our Zoom meetings, we usually had several dogs that would bark, and now we had one real here tonight, so we've managed to bring everything back to this room. Incorporate everything. Oh, your Green Drinks also.
Yeah, so this is actually going to be very interesting, and talking about, you know, the county and collaborating and everything else, this is, the Green Drinks is going back to hybrid, so Duke's Ale House is where it's held. It's going to be Wednesday, July 7, and it's going to be the McHenry County Connection Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan is going to be presented, and Emily Doucheur from the Council of Mayors will be presenting via Zoom, but Scott Henning and then John Paul Diplo, or Diplock, from the county is going to be there in person and coordinate the presentation and talk about where they're coming up with different areas to connect trails for biking and pedestrians, so that, so on. And it's hybrid, so it is limited in terms of number of people who can be in person, but if you don't get in there, you can certainly get online, but get registered ahead of time.
Okay, and is John Kramer here? Did your group have a meeting?
Yes, I give you a quick report. The group did meet last week, and the most interesting thing, or an interesting thing I'd like to report, is you may remember the Conservation District worked with the cycling without age group to allow them to park some equipment in a district facility. Last fall, they reported that they kind of just brought out a pilot program on that, and they, they gave 25 rides kind of as a test run. And this year, the representative reported that it's just absolutely exploding. In the, in the past month, they've given 125 rides, they can't keep up with the demand. The, every senior center and retirement community in the county is calling them to have them come and schedule the day to be there. And he summed it up by saying, we're going to need more bikes and pilots, so the program is going the way they had hoped, and more so, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, John.
Well, I'm actually going to, I'll just add real quickly, my husband wanted to try to be one of the volunteers, and they had so many people wanting to volunteer for this, they had to turn a lot of them away. Because they've got so many people who want to participate, yeah. So yes, you need more bikes.
So it's working from both sides, volunteers and people taking advantage, great. Hey, visiting McHenry County Executive Director.
Yes, we had a nice, sweet 16 party over at Scorched Earth, and last thing was it, I know we had several.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. So business community, we had several of our staff and board, county board members and others that were there that were able to connect, and it's a great opportunity. As you recall, the Scorched Earth, we worked with the Village of Algonquin to connect the Prairie Trail, which earlier this year during COVID, they opened up their downtown development, and then we made that connection through working with them on a piece of property so that they can make the linkage. So again, it just shows a great community collaborative partnership, providing ecotourism into the business community, and it's just a great place to sit out and have a few drinks. So again, all good stuff.
Okay, that takes care of everyone's report. I don't have this on my agenda anywhere. Is Chief King going to, is she here?
I don't know if she's out there. I wanted to share with you, we acknowledged it formally, but we hadn't received the actual plaque, and so we had that, so if you want to share that.
Would you read that?
I will. So our, our district police officers entered a wellness, I'm not, speed, but anyway, they made the national finals for Destination Zero Collaborating to Advance Officer Safety and Wellness as presented to the McHenry County Conservation District Police Officer Wellness Finalist, National Officer Safety and Wellness Awards 2021 by the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum, respect. And anyway, so we made, what was there, like four, it was not very many in the hold.
No, it's a very prestigious award to make a finalist, it's very competitive, and so this was our first time out. A lot of it was Chief King and her initiatives of working for balance of health and safety, mental health, physical fitness, and we've made some shifts, you know, for example, four days, 10 hours, just for life balance, and it's been very effective. And so again, took knowledge, and we'll go again next year, hopefully win the grand plaque.
Well, that's wonderful.
Well, for the last, made them on the agenda. Dave?
Woo-hoo. Get out of here, what did I say, John?
No, no. So I have a plaque here for Dave, which is not nearly enough for everything that he's done over 10 years.
Well.
And for all, and Dave volunteers immensely besides, and I, I know that he knows, I think everyone that works through the district personally, and he loves this district and loves the people that work here, and there is no greater advocate than Dave Brandt of this district.
Thank you greatly.
And. So anyway, presented Dave, to Dave Brandt for his outstanding contribution to McHenry County Conservation District, he is hereby commended for his tireless effort and devotion toward promoting the long-term viability of the county's biodiversity, for encouraging responsible use of our natural resources and advocating for sound environmental practices, and for his tireless effort in working cooperatively with private and public individuals in to support benefits of conservation and the mission of the district. Second-term trustee, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2021. So thank you so much.
That's a size, speakers inside each.
Now, I have a few before we go, a few pictures I wanted to share, just some backgrounds I can.
Those are free to this one.
So Dave's traveled for, for two terms in 10 years, he spent a lot of time and has been all over, and earlier in the day, it was interesting, and we'll get to that in a second, referring to dirt, and Dave taught me a lesson very early.
It was very difficult. Soil, soil.
Soil, it's not dirt, dirt's what you get on your pants.
Bingo.
Okay?
So, but Dave was out, he has served with 20 different trustees during his term, and
I won't count, you know, the number of county board members and staff members and things like that, but 20 different trustees. I remember we would visit, because we'd make our annual voyage to Washington DC and walk the halls and go under the tunnels, and we worked the land and water conservation fund, and finally, you know, this year, after all that work, and finally got the dedicated funding that we fought so many years and hard down to get that done.
And Kevin even encouraged me to get my first shoe shining.
Yeah, there's Kevin, Kevin, and he was our board number two on that, you remember that, Kevin, the tours, that we pounded the pavement and knocked on doors and got anybody that would listen to us to do that. We do the same thing in Springfield, too. And then the best of the best, Dave was there when we went at the Nationals for the Bar King Environmental Excellence Award for the work to the whole team and the whole county work, and we were able to receive that. And then, of course, just the general voyage to meet with our legislators down in January with our state conference with Illinois Association of Park Districts, and so it's a pleasure to meet and mingle there. During Dave's time, he had protected 1,866 acres and has been protected since he came on board. We obviously renovated and put forward the Lost Valley Visitor Center to a US-leaked old building, Hackmatac National Wildlife Refuge, of course, was able to see the visitation for the Friends of Hackmatac and see that materialize with all the meetings, and then to have the Secretary of the Interior Salazar and Senator Durbin again join us for that lovely day with all our partners. We've opened the Kishwaki Headwaters, the Niprissack Canoe Base improvements, Wining Creek, Fenn, Velpro Triple R West Entrance and Protection of the Tetrana Fenn, Blue Creek Conservation Area, the Dewfield Pond at the McPannell Entrance, the Community Research Forest that was done with the Land Conservancy, the Brookdale Multi-Use Trail, the Ridgefield Trace, which is the bicycle path that goes through McHenry County College and then off to Crystal Lake, the Alden Gap, the Brookdale Horse Trailer. College and then off to Crystal Lake, the Alden Gap. The Brookdale Horse Trailer Parking Lot saw the district advance into our social media and our presence that we have all over and is quite engaging. Our Conservation Congress, which we've held three times, which has been a community outreach effort to engage and then been involved with that with great speakers nationally, the Nippersink 206 Project, or all of the work to protect that Banking on Nature Project, the many scientific studies and research that have undergone by our land preservation, natural resources team, increased support of our foundation, as you heard this evening, hiring of our first executive director, and then just the numerous, as you can see around the room here, of the national, regional, and state awards that have been achieved under, while Dave has been on the board. He's met a lot of fancy people here. He met Adrian Lincoln.
Yeah.
Miss Illinois.
Miss Illinois, yeah.
He met everybody. You know, we just, again, and I've got here, and this is just a typical Dave. And let's see if I can play it here.
Yeah, I'm Dave Brant, trustee, McHenry County Conservation District Board. It's being mailed to you this weekend as landscapes. The board voted for Conservation Bill of Rights as everything that people should have with regard to water, wildlife, and whale life. And we'd love to see you read that and give us some feedback on it. We passed our budget seven to zero unanimously. We submitted it to the county board on Earth Day. And it's not, it's not adopted until the county board adopts it. That meeting, the county, council, county, committee of the whole is 16 to 9 a.m. And we sure could use your help by showing some work from the Conservation District. So, please come. Thank you very much.
That's his advocacy work. But he walked the halls. He walked down, as all the presidents do during the Congress there. And of course, he met Barack and... And of course, you know, we have had a little bit of social time. Well, that was wine, but yeah, beer. And so, whoops, I don't want to do it again here. And then, yeah, just a lot of great award things that he was involved with. Again, a lot of openings and things, as I read before. So, again, understand the lessons, soil not dirt. He brought humor to the boardroom. And he upheld the conservation land ethic. So, thank you. We're going to miss you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's truly been an honor, specifically getting to know the staff that actually is the Conservation District. And I want to thank this board. John, excellent chairmanship. But John and Pat and Chris, it's an honor to work with you and me not being the dirt cop or the wet-wet cop. It's delightful. So, thank you for that. And Bill and Linda, we stumbled at the first, but thank you so much for this year. I appreciate your effort very much. And Lynn, thank you. I miss you a lot. So, thank you very much. But the staff of the Conservation District, I can't speak enough, highly enough of them. They're awesome people. And I've got to know quite a few of them. I want to call them my friends. So, thank you very much. It's been great.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this has been bothering me. This is, what is this? May I open it?
You sure can, yeah.
A little thirsty.
Don't start drinking now.
Oh, yeah. Meeting's adjourned.
Well, I have to have public comments, and then you can make that motion.
Let me just say, can I just say one thing? And I'm not going to go into anything.
We'll wrap that later.
Okay.
All I was going to say was I had gone through this whole thing about, I wanted to say something. And the more I thought about it, the more formal it got, as many of you can imagine, because I just tend to do that. And so, and I realized that something very formal would be so inappropriate for a man who's very informal and very friendly and warm and caring. And so, I just, I tossed that one out and just wanted to say, it's been wonderful to work with. I just appreciate all your time, your commitment, your leadership, your support. It's been wonderful. I've been to a lot of events over the last four years. I will tell you, they are much more fun if he's there. And I will, and especially like early on, when I was really, like, I was not, you know, confident in my networking capabilities. All I had to do was go stand with him. And he would be there, engaging in some, you know, any number of conversations or storytelling. And that would just break the ice and I would be, I'd be good to go. And I had this in my head that he knew absolutely everybody he ever ran into. And while that's somewhat true, he does know most people. He does not know everybody. And, but he treats everybody as if he does. And he's just an amazing guy. And I miss you. Thank you.
You're kind, Rick. Thank you.
Anyone else around this? Bonnie?
I think some of the past trustees might want to give words.
Dear Bonnie.
Yes. I know, on behalf of all the past trustees to work with you, that you brought so much knowledge forward that helped us just move forward. Thank you so much. But now I'm starting to envision you laying under these exotic trees. These hummingbirds, butterflies. So, my gift is quite a... A French chapour.
You dear one, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Hi, Dave. It's an honor to be here, to celebrate here today. And I think back to when I met you, I think, prior to my time on the district board. But, you know, your green nature, your connection to the environment, your connection to people has been awesome and always inspiring and motivating. And I was going to talk in public comment about it, but just in general, to see the organizations at the district as a part of, that you all are as trustees, that our staff is, is just awesome. So, you know, it's a personal piece for me. You never know who we might meet. And so, every connection, every contact, I know, for staff and for board is a part of that. So, you know, having had a small part in that, I go back now to 2007, when I started, and to see how things have continued to grow and develop has been awesome. You've been a huge part of that. So, appreciate the model that you've been and, you know, look forward to continuing to keep things growing in great ways.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Great to meet you, Derek.
I don't think so. I haven't even got to officially to public comment. Pete is back there. Okay. Pete?
Hi, Dave. How far do we go back?
God, forever. Parks and Rec at McHenry.
Yeah. Dave, a lot of people might not know that Dave, other than his service here with the Conservation District. You were with NCRS.
You and our Natural Resources Conservation Service.
Right. For the 30 years. But a great career. You were very helpful. We first met, I was a young novice at college, not knowing anything about development, things like that, going out of the county back then. But as I got to know Dave, I was impressed. And I think working with all the other people over the years, the park districts, the agricultural community, the Conservation District, all the park districts and agencies that have dealt with development issues, have worked with conservation. So, I've never heard a bad word about Dave.
Oh, you haven't listened.
I disagree with you guys. I disagree. But I think they always had a lot of respect for that office. It was not adversarial. It was always, you know, when you talked about it, it was very positive. So, Dave, along with all the things you've done here for the Conservation District, you've had a long distinguished career in this county. So, when I was on the county board and we were going through the interview process, the new trustees, Dave applied. And I'm going through the filing. You know, you know the county. You know the land. You know the soils. You knew the people. So, not only were you a great person to work with on this board for one term, we put you on for two terms, told you that you were available to have working for the district. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
All the years, Dave has worked hard and has been very dedicated. But a lot of people don't know that Dave likes to play hard also.
Okay, next one. It was a piano bar in Minneapolis.
I think I could have brought some.
I know. You guys, I heard about that, the McCog all founding.
But we had some great time on socials, too. It was a lot of fun working with Dave. And we had a lot of tough issues, but also when it was time to go and socialize and everything, we had some great fun. That one night, Dave, I remember my wife flew in.
No, I don't remember.
I've never been to a piano bar. So, we took him out for a social in Minneapolis. And by the end of the night, he was a professional.
Kevin carried me to my room.
Yeah. But late that night, I had to go back to the hotel where my wife flew in and went right to the hotel. So, by the time I got in that morning, of course, you know, what happened last time, where'd you go? What'd you do? How can you name it so late? It was Dave. All the years of late county board meetings or mostly Conservation District meetings, or things went late or the things that were going on and everything, I had no problem throwing Dave under the bus. But Dave, I told her about the function tonight. She's back in Florida. She said, congratulations. And she was talking about Dave. I'd love to be there.
Thank you.
She couldn't make it, but...
Give her a hug for me, please.
Very well respected, very well liked. Congratulations.
Thank you, Pete.
I guess I have Dave and I have Ann back. We still have Dave.
We got another Dave. We got all time. We got Dave's at. And I agree with Pete and Lynn. You do live enough anywhere you're at. And it's always fun. And I learned a lot from you when I came on the board. Pete and I came on at the same time and got to have the pleasure of serving with you. And today I was out on Lake Dalvin with Tim Rock. And he said to say hello. And him and his son, they had the same kind of fun, or him and his daughter, rather, had the same kind of fun that you and your grandson had. And it was awesome. It was, we had a great time. But you will be missed here. And I think, I mean, you got a picture that says trustee, but you should be. It's...
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Very kind.
Ann?
Just on behalf of me as a staff person, correct prior staff person, and as volunteer, thanks for volunteering to be on the board for 10 years and put up with us, put up with all of us and represent all of us on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Time to move on to public comments, too. Is there anybody out there? Stephanie, anybody out?
Nope, there is no one.
May I?
Yes, sir.
So, Kevin Ivors, just a public comment. As a vice president of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation, appreciate the continued opportunities to collaborate. Look forward to literally getting out and working with all of you. And I'm grateful for the chance to be here this evening. And also just appreciative of the accessibility and transparency and the utilization of technologies over the last, I think, eight months. Have a great way to get plugged in as best we could. Much appreciated for the sharing of the work together.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you do. It's been great. Anyone else? All right, Dave, you don't have to do.
I moved to adjourn?
There's a second from Linda. Megan, roll call.
Trustee Cook? Trustee Dom? Trustee Thomas? Trustee Brant? Trustee Fritz? Trustee Campbell? And trustee Henning?
Yes. So, we have a motion to adjourn. And with that being said, I hope everyone will certainly stay and socialize. That's... We all make one friend. So, please, please stay if you can. And we are adjourned.